Pete Neal, he's back. He's returned.
I'm back.
Return of the Jedi, return of Pete Neal.
There you go, return of the Jedi. I'm on the, I'm on the right side, I think.
Okay, good, not the dark side.
Not the dark side.
You're one of the good guys.
I'll try to be, try to be.
So what brings you back?
Well, there were some things in the first podcast, we talked about my time on Hill Country Drive, which by the way, I think I followed up with you and showed you a little bit more specifically.
Yeah, you did, yeah.
And I showed you the old Poway Road, the ones with the, that used to go up the hill with the double backs, which were a ball on my motorcycle. I mean, that's how I learned how to spot people who knew how to handle motorcycles. It was to look at the foot pegs to see if the foot pegs are ground off.
Oh.
All right. If you know how to take turns on a motorcycle, look for the foot pegs.
Really?
If they're ground off, the guy knows what he's doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
When I rode a motorcycle, they were not ground off, so, all right, okay.
So we covered that, we covered Golden Way.
Right.
There's an aspect to Golden Way that I want to go back and revisit.
Okay.
That had an impact on me this, this last week, it came to the forefront again, so I'm going to go over that. So there's some things that I didn't cover in detail.
Okay.
On the first podcast, so that's why I asked if I could come back and
Sure.
Patch it up a little bit.
Okay.
All right. And yes, I'm running for District One Councilman.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'm going to be bringing in my attitude toward, again, you asked me some questions about what's my position on this, that, and the other thing in the last podcast, so, and I said, I don't want to go there.
Right.
All right, well, I still don't want to go there because I'm still establishing my platform and my agenda. Okay, but I'm going to explain to you a little bit more in detail why.
Okay.
Okay. But taking a note from some other podcasts that I saw, there was some time spent on parental influences.
Hmm.
Okay, and I did mention my mom, 100.6, I said 6'6", it's now 6'7".
Okay.
Okay.
The needle moved just a little.
Just a tad, you know, a couple, a week or so has gone by, so it's .67 now. Um, but there was an aspect I totally didn't touch, and that was my dad. Uh, I think I may have mentioned that I was the son of an Episcopalian minister.
The son of a, son of a preacher man.
Son of a preacher man.
Yeah.
And that has some weight to it.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, there's the education you get in school as, as a youngster, but there's also education you get from parental influence.
Huge, huge.
Yeah. So my dad had a big part in my positioning and stances and morality. And I'm not talking to the detail of the Ten Commandments, okay? I'm talking just knowing what's right, what's wrong, and putting your heart and soul into the right and making damn sure you don't do the wrong. Okay, so I wanted to cover a little bit of him, okay? Um, and the impact he had on me, which was tremendous. Um, as a matter of fact, I was completely under his thumb as a youngster. I was the younger of two children, my sister being older than I am. Um, they actually, my mom and dad lost a child in between my sister and me. So, um, yeah, I am my mother's son. She, she dotes on me more than she should.
And she's 100.67 years old.
Yes, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But because my dad was in the church, it was very regimented. I mean, he left the UK at the age of 18, 19 years old on a scholarship from the Episcopal Church to go to seminary school, college and seminary school in Canada, which is where he, he met my mother. And then he had his parishes, and his first parishes were in Canada, one of them within reach of the Arctic Circle.
Really?
Yeah.
That's, that's way the heck up there.
He was way up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but fortunately, they waited for me to come along till they'd made it across the border and were in upstate New York. So I was born in upstate New York, but at the age of two, he moved to this little town called Pawtucket, Rhode Island.
Right.
And that's where I was really raised.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, being the son of an Episcopalian minister and the second grade school teacher in the town, I was under a lot of scrutiny, and it was oppressive.
Right.
Um.
Because you couldn't make your dad look bad.
I could not make my dad look bad, and everybody was constantly watching me.
Right, looking for any hint of hypocrisy.
Yes, absolutely.
I hear you.
So, uh, my formal education started off going to St. Dunston's Boys School. It was a private school in Providence sponsored by the Episcopal Church. And oh, by the way, the Episcopal Church not only did that, but you went through that entire regime from kindergarten through 12th grade, and upon graduation from the 12th grade, you automatically went into Brown University.
Ivy League.
Ivy League.
Wow, like, that's, that's a
My future was painted in front of me.
Wow.
Uh, I had a problem with that.
Wow. Um. For some people, that's a Willy Wonka golden ticket.
Certainly is, and I probably should have taken advantage of it.
Mm-hmm.
All right, but it wasn't me.
Right, you got to be true to yourself.
And one of the things that I learned en route to that was, uh, something my dad did. Um, St. Dunston's Boys School, I, I, I left that at sixth grade, and I went into a public school system.
Hmm.
And all of a sudden, Pete wasn't performing at the same capacity. And as a matter of fact, the other kids in the church were not performing at the same capacity. So he started to dig into the school system. Why are the kids in my parish not performing as well as the other population in school?
That's interesting, because usually people think that religious schools are more disciplined and have a higher quality of education. That's the perception of many people.
That's it, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, so this, this raised up some morning flags in him, so he dug into it. And what he found was that the different churches in the area were holding tutorial schools in the evening, helping kids with their homework. So all the people I was in class with were handing in homework assignments that were assisted by tutors.
The, the, the St. Dunstons?
No, this isn't
The, the public school?
This isn't the public school.
Okay.
All right. So I said, well, that's not right. And I can remember helping my dad, I was not handy with tools, I was a sixth, seventh grader, you know.
Right.
But I was holding the screwdrivers and the screws for him as he physically went down in our basement at the rectory and made desks, handmade the desks himself.
Oh, wow.
To be put in the, into the church, down in the recreation areas of the church. And he opened up a tutorial school, and all of a sudden, people's grades started to go up. It was wonderful.
Oh, hey, yeah.
So he spread the word around to the other ministers and the dioceses of Rhode Island, and, and they took the hint, and they started doing the same thing. Well, the bishop in Washington DC caught wind of this, and he said, wait a second, whoa, timeout. You're mixing church and state, that's against the law, we can't do that.
Right.
And my dad said, but this is important because the other people are not following that same rule and, and in order for our kids to get into colleges and stuff, they've got to maintain grade point average, and they've got to be worked, so we've got to be fair here and equal. Bishop said, no, shut it down. My dad put his job on the line. He says, well, I'm no longer going to be the minister of St. Luke's if I can't run this school. Bishop says, you're up.
Wow, he's a man of principle right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I learned from that, you know, when you make a decision, if it's what you need to do, if it's the right thing to do, you do it.
Yes, I'm with you there.
All right.
Yeah.
So, well, he, he got a job as the, uh, Department Head at Rhode Island Junior College for English and English Composition. So he was fine employment wise, but we did, we did have to leave the rectory. We had to move into the house that my grandparents had owned, you know, at the time, so.
You're still in Pawtucket?
Yeah, this is all in, well, no, actually, the, the house my, my grandparents owned was in Lincoln, an adjoining community.
Okay.
Lincoln, Rhode Island. So I finished my high school education going to Lincoln Senior High School, you know. And, uh, that's when I did my bombshell. I came home in April. And I said, Dad, Mom, uh, I'm in the Navy.
Oh, no. What year is this?
This is 69.
Oh, well, why? Okay, yeah, this is a shocker.
Yeah, uh, my dad was none too pleased.
No.
But, uh, being over the age of 18, I didn't have to have parental signatures.
Right.
This was the draft age.
Yeah, yeah.
This was my, God, he says, I've been working very hard to make sure you get college deferments and stuff, and you don't have to go to Vietnam, he says, and then you enlist. I said, yeah, but that, I enlisted in the Navy. There's very few Navy people that go end up going to Vietnam. And I'll find a little nook or cranny somewhere that I can, you know, try to do my service to the country, but I mean, we were losing kids that I was
Oh, yeah, this is brutal.
Left and right. There were two things killing kids in, in my age group, and that was drinking, driving, drugs.
Right.
And Vietnam.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
A significant portion of my high school class is gone way before their time, way before their time.
You ever seen that Ken Burns documentary on Vietnam?
Yeah.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just tragic loss of life, senseless loss of life.
Yeah.
Um, wow.
So I, I had made my escape, much to my dad's chagrin.
Okay.
Uh, my mom was amazingly okay with it. She was very supportive of that, and she's always maintained it was, it's the best decision you ever made with your life. So I'd like to expand upon that, because I'd like to think that it was the best decision I made for me.
Right.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I learned by doing things.
Mm-hmm, learning by doing, right.
University of Hard Knocks.
Yeah.
If I'd gone to an Ivy League, I would have been drinking a lot more at a very earlier age, much earlier age, I would have wasted Brown University because I, I just didn't care, I was not motivated for it.
Just wasn't the right thing for you at that moment in your life?
Right.
Sure.
So, but I jumped out of the frying pan into the fire.
Yes, you did. Yeah, into the Navy when there was a major conflict going on in Southeast Asia.
Fuck, the Navy was very good. They, nine years in the service, three years of that was spent in school.
Okay.
Right off the bat.
Right.
Yeah. I remember going to Basic Electricity and Electronics School. They said, oh, you're in the top 25% of the Navy. And then I went to ETA School.
What's that mean?
Electronics Technician Class A.
Okay.
So they said, okay, you're now in the top 10% of the Navy.
Yeah, hey.
And they sent me off to this other school, and you're in the top 1% of the Navy. I said, oh, I got to stop going to school. And the guy says, what do you mean, you're, you're in the top 1% now? And I said, yeah, but I'm percentage wise, you're going to percentile me right out of the Navy here shortly, you know.
Right.
You know, the number keeps getting small.
Right, soon you'll be nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, uh, then I got to Pearl Harbor, and, uh, I remember the conversation real well. The guy says, well, he says, are you ready to go to sea? I said, about time we found out, huh?
This is after three years.
This is, well, the schools were broken up. I had, I was first stationed in San Diego, as a matter of fact, Imperial Beach, at the Naval Radio Receiving Facility down in Imperial Beach. You know that thing that people used to call the dinosaur cage?
No, I'm not familiar with that.
It's, there's a part of it still down there.
Okay.
They're turning it into a SEAL base now.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, it was a big, huge HF, High Frequency Direction Finding Antenna System down there.
Oh, wow.
Part of a network, and that was my first duty station.
Mm-hmm.
And that was boring.
Okay, yeah, well, you're on the beach.
So they, I said, what else do we do?
Yeah.
You know, they said, well, we got this communication security van, you want to take responsibility for that? And I said, oh, yeah. What was, what do I do? They said, well, you take this to down to different things, and you eavesdrop on the pilots or whatever you're doing, and, and report when they're screwing up.
Oh, wow.
So, um, yeah, a little eavesdropping on our guys to protect them.
Sure.
Because you don't want to have them giving their position away when they're flying over North Vietnam.
Right.
So it was training, training stuff, but it was a good job, I had a good time. Um, but each step of the way, I learned more and more by doing it. I became more aware of things that were going on. So it came time for me to take my first submarine ride, which, again, I had volunteered for submarines because it wasn't Vietnam.
Well, yeah.
It was not in-country Vietnam. I thought I was going to be relatively safe. Okay, so, yeah, I went into submarines because I thought it was a good place to be, and it turned out fabulous. I mean, the people who ride submarines are the best of the best.
Okay.
I've never worked with better teams.
It's a special breed, right?
It's a special breed of people.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, so I'm going to come back to that in a minute or two.
Okay.
Um, I'll back up a little bit more, back into the city council run. Okay, how has that helped me? How is that preparation my dad did? Well, first of all, you'll notice that I am now in Poway, California. I'm as far away from Lincoln, Rhode Island, as I can possibly get and still stay within the continental United States.
Pretty much, yeah, yeah, yeah.
People in Southern California are very respectful of privacy.
They are.
Okay, you have to really go out of your way to acknowledge your neighbors. It's hard, I mean, backyard conversations. Whereas in Rhode Island, people were paying attention to everything I did. I was constantly under scrutiny. Their business was watching your business.
Okay.
Invasively.
Like Mrs. Kravitz on Bewitched.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that is oppressive, whereas in Southern California, it's kind of a plus.
Hmm.
Okay? The downside is we don't communicate enough.
That's right, yeah, that is the downside.
All right, so what I'm trying to get people to think about is our change in our current political situation here in Poway. We are going from an at-large representation, where every election, you're voting for different sets of representatives, but they're representing the entire community, 50,000 people. Four guys with four different perspectives, which unfortunately, there's a lot of people in South Poway said, gee, they're more frequently North Poway than they are South Poway, we're underrepresented.
Right.
So the move has been now to change the representation, to spread it out a little bit more geographically and from interests.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Hallelujah.
Yeah, when you visited us last time, you, you're a big proponent of district elections, it brings people closer to their representative, I mean, I agree, I think it's a fantastic move.
Now, here, here, I'm going to advertise my, I wore this shirt specifically.
Okay.
And this right at the car, I hope everybody can see that.
I hope so, too, you know, see, are you on camera? Maybe, I think so, okay?
You know what it says? Have you figured it out?
Intelligence is
The ability
The ability
To adapt
To change.
And the town of Poway has to do that. Right now, what's happening politically in Poway, and I'll give you an example in a minute. What's happening politically in Poway is everybody thinks it's an at-large system still.
Right, that's the way it's always been.
Okay. They got to change their form of thinking, because now they're going to be voting for representatives for specific areas.
Mm-hmm.
All right, people in District One are not going to be able to vote for District Three people, or Two, or Four in the next election.
That's right.
Okay, they're going to be restricted to District One. You can vote for at-large, but not for the district. So you got to start focusing on who best represents this smaller segment of Poway of where you live.
Mm-hmm.
All right, what are your interests? And yes, we're going to have to refine the process a little bit, but they've done a pretty good job. Demographically, population-wise, plus what is what I call where the turf meets the dirt.
I remember that, that's a good line.
The dirt of Poway.
Right.
All right, and it's, it's very unique, okay? Everything that I've seen since 1980 built in Poway is affected by the dirt it's built on.
Yes, it is.
And people have to pay attention to that. And there's nobody more familiar with their area than the people who are living on that area.
That's right, yeah, they, they understand the nuances of their neighborhood.
So in this district method, when you vote, you're putting somebody in to represent your area. Who's going to work with the other representatives and who are working with the people that represent their area, and will have particulars and will work things out, okay? I, if I'm elected, that's the way it's going to be, all right? But the problem is, the people are approaching this election like it's still an at-large.
Yeah, there's, it's, it's a transition time, right?
Yeah.
Some people are, some people understand it, some people don't
Don't get it.
Don't get it, some people may not get it until they show up on Election Day and look at their ballot and say, hey, how come I can't vote for so-and-so, and, because they're no longer in their district? You know, and they'll figure it out.
They'll figure it out.
Yeah.
And I'm not here to preach to you, all right? I'm not preaching to you about this, I'm just telling you that you've, you've got to look at the way things are going to be happening.
Yes.
All right. I tried to look straight at the camera, I think that's right.
That's, yeah, yeah, there, there's a term for that, it's like the third, I don't know, he's breaking, breaking the seal.
Right.
But anyways, go ahead.
Okay, now, things that I've learned, things I've experienced, last time I talked about Golden Way.
Yes.
All right, well, I said it resurfaced
Yes, it did.
Since our last videoing. So I decided to go to the POW MIA Memorial yesterday at the Veterans Park.
The one by Old Poway Park?
That's correct.
Right, okay.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
It's the, apparently, this is the first time it's been held outside of a VFW meeting area. This is the first time in that particular area.
Oh, nice, okay.
Which is what got my attention.
Yeah, sure.
Because, uh, from my Navy time, when I was in Pearl Harbor, we had to keep inventory of equipment that's deployed all the time. So one of the pile cabinets in the back of the supply room where the records are all clipped of the equipment that's deployed was the equipment onboard the USS Pueblo, which was captured by the North Koreans.
Hmm.
And it's still in North Korea, they're using it as a display of their power.
Oh, yeah.
They took on the United States.
Sure.
But Lloyd Booker was a, was the COO of the, of the Pueblo. And he was a POW for a little over a year.
Really?
And I served with a couple of people that were sailors on the Pueblo. So they were, POWs mean something to me.
Sure, yeah, of course.
Lloyd went shopping with his wife at, it used to be Alpha Beta, but he didn't like going into the store. He would find a place to sit down out in front of the store, and I had a lot of conversations with the man.
Nice.
Out in front of the store before, before he passed. Now that sort of brought full circle.
Okay.
Told you my first duty station was in Imperial Beach. Okay, I flew into San Diego, reporting and didn't know nothing about San Diego. Here's my orders, where do I go? Oh, you go over there to Coronado and stay at the AMPFIB base, because that's the only barracks they have for the radio station down in Imperial Beach, which is where you're going. I said, okay, so I went to there. It was on a weekend, I spent the weekend with the people going through the AMPFIB school. Monday morning, I went down to the Naval Radio Receiving Facility, and I reported in, you know, and I said, you're at the AMPFIB base? And I said, yeah, until I can find a place to live, I want to be there. And they said, oh, great. Goes over, picks up this tape recorder, he hands it to me, he says, go up to the AMPFIB base to the courthouse, he says, set this recorder up for them. And they, they want to record what's going on. Really? Yeah. You're an electronics technician, set up the recorder.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so I said, what for? They went, that's a Board of Inquiry, they, they, they bought the Board of Inquiry recorder. I was the Board of Inquiry for the USS Pueblo.
Wow.
All right, I mean, I set the recorder up, they did a subsequent movie about it. I seen some of the script for the movie was based on that tape recorder.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Lloyd Booker stood up and said, I want to recommend the following crewmen for awards and citations for valor, bravery. And all the people walked out on him, he stood there in an empty room naming off sailors' names.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow, I'm familiar with this story.
Yeah, yeah, the Navy, uh, didn't like losing ships to the enemy. And that was, that was a black eye. I mean, yeah, they, they gave him another command, and he didn't do anything wrong, nothing, you know, but yeah, they put him in charge of the mining fortilla in Guam. And that was just before they decided to mine hyphen harbor, and there was Lloyd on the, on the press again, I'd like to recognize the following sailor's story. Kill it. Yeah, but he was a great guy, had some good stories, I liked talking to him while Wendy was in shopping.
Okay. Right, right.
So, um, so anyway, I went to this POW MIA memorial thing, and, and for the first time, nice, beautiful park. And I'm up against the fence, I don't want to be too intrusive. And, uh, there was this elderly gentleman there with the appropriate hat on, and he says something to the effect of, geez, I wonder where all the politicians are, he says, this is going to be like a horn, says, well, politicians coming over here. I overheard that.
Yeah.
Now, I went over and I very carefully tapped him on the shoulder, and I said, sir, I said, sir, um, if you're not a politician, if you've never been a politician, but you're running for office, am I in that group? He says, you running for, yeah, I said, yeah, I'm running for District One. He says, yeah, you're a politician. So I turned around, I went back to my position on the fence there and just tried to blend in. Um, so sure enough, the other politician showed up. I mean, and there were little beehives of activity and conversations going on about the politics in Poway today. A couple of them benched it over, and we shook hands and stuff. One of my partner running mates for District One says, Pete, he says, you're a vet, how come, how come you're not involved in this? I said, well, I got a problem with, you know, personal problem with the VFW. And he says, what's that? And I said, well, I lived on Golden Way next to the VFW, I think it's number 70 there, and he said, you know how much damage a beer bottle can do to a rotary mower blade? I mean, I was out there mowing my property.
Were they throwing beer bottles out onto your property?
Things happen.
Yeah, yeah, I, I hear you, yeah. But you know, you're just doing your, you know, taking care of your own business, and all of a sudden, kaboom.
Kaboom, and my blade's gone, you know?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So we had our differences.
Sure.
And I'm pretty sure I'm not well liked, because I eventually sold the property to Jimmy Fayborg, and now they don't have any grass field at all, they got a parking lot, a body shop that's sitting back of them now. Maybe even a stone wall fence, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't been back, but so I never felt like I'd be a welcome guest at the VFW, which is fine, I don't drink anyway, so, you know, fine. Um, so that's the explanation I gave him as to not being a part of it, but I certainly appreciated the chance to observe.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
POW MIA. And I wish people hadn't thought of the politicians as being hornets nesting around this ceremony.
I, I understand the perspective, but, yeah, I hear you, I understand what you're saying.
What I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to get to the point where I'm saying people should welcome their politicians as people that will listen.
Well, welcome their representatives, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't want them to look upon a politician as a nuisance. We should be their voice in their city government.
That's right.
Okay.
And that's the beauty of this whole districting process, is it makes it even a better representation.
Right, and politicians get labeled.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I do.
Oh, yeah, of course.
I mean, part of, part of, I won't accept any donations, okay? I don't have a platform, I don't have an agenda, all right?
No baggage.
No baggage.
Mm-hmm.
All right, because I'm concentrating on the fact that my vision of the way district representation should be is being a district representative, I should be hearing and collecting input, filtering it, understanding what the meat and potato is of that particular issue, and then working with the other city councilmen for the overall big picture and benefit of the city. That's the way it should be. I shouldn't be looked upon, and I think it's unavoidable right now. I mean, because when the politicians did show up, they were a little hive of activity unto themselves. they were a little hive of activity unto themselves, talking amongst themselves. At the city council meeting on Tuesday night, it was the same way. Dave noticed me in the, he says, you're all there by yourself in the right-hand side of the corner. He says, everybody else was sitting over there. I says, yeah, I'm listening. I'm observing. By the way, I noticed this one particular incident and I'd, I'd like to hear, why, why didn't you hear that guy out? You know? Here's a guy who claims he's in fear for his life on an issue. And you'd rather comply with parliamentary procedure? You passed the thing without paying any attention to the fact that he was begging, who do I talk to?
This was during what? Public comments where you're limited to a certain amount of time, like three minutes?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so, damn it.
Yeah, yeah.
Representatives should be listening to everybody.
That's right.
Even the little guy.
Especially the little guy.
Especially when he say, I feel like my life is being threatened.
Right.
Is it really?
Right.
You know, hear the guy out. So that's, that's me. I will listen. I won't say much. If you ask me my opinion, I'm, I'm going to turn it right around on you. Case in point, I think you saw a recent Facebook thing.
Yeah.
What was your perspective of that? What did I do?
You, it was a person on Facebook that asked all the politicians what their positions were on, you know, I think it was three different issues. And rather than saying, my position is ABC on this issue, you flipped it around and you said, you know, well, what, you know, what do you want? What, what, what are you striving for? How can I help you?
Right.
You know, as opposed to saying, you know, I'm for a team green or team orange or whatever it is.
Yeah. Well, I, I'm glad, I, I think I'm slowly getting my point across.
I think it is. And because you, you expressed this last time is that you're a scientist.
Yes.
And you will observe, you will gather the evidence, you will reason, you will be rational, and then you'll make your judgment.
Conversation amongst the politicians right now that I was a party to, I've sat there and I listened to them and they were talking about their lawn signs. They were talking about when they go to print.
Yeah.
Well, folks, here it is, one eighth of an eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper with District One, Pete Neeld, and my website and my email address on it. That's as much as I'm going to produce. I'm not going to clutter, clutter your yards with it.
That's propaganda, man.
I know.
So that's your business card.
That, no.
It's not even a card.
My campaign material.
That's it. That's everything. That's the pamphlet, the trifold, the sign. It's all bundled into that.
Yeah.
And it just got your information. How people can reach Pete and express to them what they need.
In its entirety. I'm not asking, there's nothing on here that says, please send me money. There's nothing there about that. I'm not going to go over myself imposed budget. City of Poway keeps you, you got to file paperwork if you go over 200 bucks. I said, okay, that's my limit. I'm not going to spend more than 200.
We have a website.
Yeah. Cost me 15 bucks.
15 bucks.
With a domain name.
But with your own name, right?
Yeah.
Neil.com.
Dot Pete Neeld dot com.
Well, that's a domain you probably wanted to own anyway. So that's good.
Maybe.
Yeah. Is there a donate button on your website?
Facebook link.
Okay, sure.
Wait a second. I'm wrong. I will promote things that I think are really cool things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can get to John Riley Projects from my webpage.
Well, all right. Thank you very much. Okay.
Focus, focus on the media and my John Riley podcast.
Yeah, of course.
You're there.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Because this is an important thing. This, this is a different medium. It's relatively new. It's going to allow people like me and my peer group who are running, maybe not all the way to politician stage yet, even though some of them, this is their second or third effort. Okay. This is my first. I'm 68 years old. I don't know how many more times I'm going to be able to do this, but my mom's 100.67.
So you got a long ways to go.
There's a chance.
Yeah. It's good genes, right?
It's not talk-term limits, okay?
All right.
Yeah. Anything else that I've missed that you thought of?
No, I, I just think it's great that you contacted me and you said, yeah, I'd like to come back. And, you know, we, we, we went for a long time last time. I think it went over an hour and a half. And you shared so much about your position on issues or your, the way you think, the way you reason. We talked a lot about Calypso, your Corvette and your, you know, your drives up Highway one and Route 66. That was fun.
Yep.
But even after that discussion, you felt there was more that you wanted to share.
Yeah.
And, and you wanted to have an opportunity to share it. And going around town, passing out your, your, your campaign literature.
I just thought of something.
Okay, what was that?
I gotta go there.
Okay.
I tell you, some, sometimes I make mistakes.
You? Nah.
I, I will make, I got so excited when I printed these out and I was ready to go hand them around the neighborhood. I said, ah, I'm, I'm going to drive around the Palisades. There's people I know in the Palisades.
Yeah.
That are out there every day, walking their dogs, you know, jogging, you know, it's a great route. So I said, I'm going to go hand these out to the people I see, the people I know, right?
Yeah.
So, and sure enough, it was great. I mean, I'd, I'd pull over, we'd chat for a couple of minutes. They'd take the card and, you know, and off we'd go. Made a huge mistake.
Uh-oh, what happened?
There was this girl running through the neighborhood jogging.
Uh-oh.
And I pulled up behind her and I said, hey.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Oh, no.
I never, I never thought of the impact that that would really have on a single girl living through a neighborhood, you know?
Yeah.
So if you're out there and listening to the podcast, I sincerely, sincerely apologize for scaring the living daylights out of you. I am not stalking you. I'm not going to attack anybody.
Pete just wants to be the representative of District One.
Representative. Exactly right.
Yeah. So I think it's great that you came back, you know, we got to talk more and, you know, if you want to come back again, the invitation's open.
I'm coming back.
You, as you should. And, you know, this is to all the politicians that are running, whether they're running for city council, for Poway mayor, running for Poway School Board, come on down. You know, it's Saturday, the 22nd. And we're doing this session with you this afternoon. This morning we had Charlie Sellers here. And he is running for, uh, he's an incumbent, running for reelection for Poway School Board. So we're hoping to have more people. And if you want to come back, great. If you want to come back a third time, Pete, for, uh, Return of the Jedi. So we'll have you. Yeah.
All right. Could we do two or three?
Let's, we'll just play it as we go. Yeah. I mean, the door is always open and, um, you know.
I'm talking about individuals.
Well, I gotta get some more microphones.
We'll share.
Well, yeah.
I can pass it.
Okay. Yeah. But yeah, I'd like to get, I'm actually for this podcast project. I do want to get to that. Um, I've been talking with some of the, the boys on the Poway High Football Team and I want to bring some of them in. I'm going to have to get more mics for that for sure.
Yeah.
So if someone wants to schedule, you know, two or three more guests to come in, then yeah, I'll go get some more mics and we'll set it up and we'll see how we go.
Sounds good.
This is a project and it's, I'm learning as I go and.
It's, it's great bumping your butt, you know?
Oh, yeah. It's fun. It's fun. I get to meet you. I get to have some interesting discussions. I'm learning about all this technology. I'm learning how to do podcasts.
You ever been to Kitty Hawk, North Carolina?
No. No, I haven't.
It's interesting.
How so?
The first flights.
Oh, yeah.
The first recognized flights.
Yeah.
They bumped their butts a few times before they made flight.
I'm sure they did. You know, and Edison went through how many light bulbs before he got one to work, right?
Yeah.
That's all part of the creative process, you know, and, and you, you make mistakes and you learn and you get better and you just keep ratcheting up, right? Until you get it right.
Yeah.
So, super. So Pete, you're welcome back. Anytime.
One more point.
Okay.
Maybe you'll have to edit this in. Mistakes.
Okay.
Are sometimes the right thing to do.
Well, not intentionally, but.
Let me give you an example.
Sure.
I was, uh, at sea, uh, in the Mediterranean on a submarine and, um, we were supposed to be heading into Naples for some liberty.
R and R.
R and R.
Yeah.
After being deployed for a length of time.
Uh, under the ocean.
Under the ocean. Oh, under the sea, the Mediterranean Sea.
Okay.
Pretty shallow in places, by the way. So, um, and all of a sudden we got extended. We were told that, no, you got to stay out. You got to complete this part of the mission.
Oh, no. Okay.
So we're going to be at sea for another two weeks.
Oh, a lot of disappointed guys.
A lot of disappointed guys.
Yeah.
As we were really looking forward to this.
Sure. Yeah.
The submarine anniversary, by the way. So it was the big party time on the base two was going to be.
Yeah, yeah.
The submarine birthday ball and we weren't going to be able to attend. It was, it was really a bummer. So I happened to be in sonar and on watch, um, one of those days. And I'd been listening to this one contact and he was a little bit suspicious and he, he perked my ears up. But he was weak and distant when I first had him. So I just took a mental note that he was out there. Over the next couple of hours, he got louder and more distinct. And I said, I, I, I'm nervous about this guy. You know? This, this could be.
And so you're doing sonar. You're listening.
Listening to sonar, taking the wheel, turning, turning the emphasis or focusing the hydrophones in certain areas and trying to figure out where, and he had a steady bearing. He's coming right at us.
Oh, no.
Right. So not an immediate threat, but there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So all of a sudden, the officer, the deck comes over the PA system. He says, sonar con, make a careful sweep around. We're going to come to periscope depth. Very well. Con sonar eye. And so I said, I gotta call this.
Yeah, you do.
You know? So I, con sonar, I have a contact bearing zero five eight degrees. He's been on steady bearing. And from the way he's, I gotta call it as a possible warship. And sonar con eye. And we proceeded to go to periscope depth. And a little while later, he says, sonar con, your possible warship is a white brightly lit ocean liner.
Okay.
I said, con sonar eye. Um, could we get a fire control solution on that guy and just send a weapon in his direction? Let's screw up their vacation like we just had our vacation screwed up. And I got reprimanded for that. But the point was, I made the wrong call. I had reported to the controller room, come into periscope depth, that we had a possible warship. By my information, he was a possible warship, the way I had been trained. There were two screws going at high speed. Possible warship. On a bearing, closing our bearing. They're coming at us. I called it as I did. Now, I was wrong. It was a white ocean liner. Some people don't have any lovely Mediterranean crews, but not to me it wasn't. It was a possible warship. So I will make mistakes. But I can only go off of the information that people give me.
Right.
So if I'm running for city council, you want me to make the right decisions for you, give me the information.
So reach out to Pete Neeld.
Please do.
And he'll be the man that will represent District One.
Yes.
And.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of your ability and work to make Poway a better place. Right?
You betcha.
Okay, Pete. Thanks for coming and we'll have you come back again.